Proud with us tonight, and Madam Clark, what you call her role?
Mayor Hardeman.
Here.
Councilman Farnum.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Curtis.
Here.
Councilman Brown.
Here.
Councilman Liberty.
Here.
Councilman Conley.
Right.
And Councilman France.
I'm here.
And we want to, as always, say thank you to our TV, our Tyler TV people. And Tim Wallace is here with his students, Haley, Johnny, and Alana. And we appreciate what your kids do a great deal. Would like to, at this time, to, as most of you know, this last year of me being mayor, I've been trying to highlight our churches. And so every month, I've been inviting someone from a different church. And tonight, I've invited my good friend, Mark Rauten. And Mark has been, not only a good friend, personal friend, he has been a wonderful addition to our community. And I will tell you that I'm always proud to talk about Stone Brook. And in fact, toward the end of the evening, I'm going to make an announcement that involves Stone Brook and an event that's going to happen there. And I know Mark does have to leave, he has to go to another meeting. But Mark, would you come up and say the invocation? And would you remain standing? And we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Mark?
I'm here.
Yes.
I don't need a mic, God can hear me. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the privilege of leadership. I thank you for these men and women that have given themselves to serve our community with their time and their gifts and their abilities. The Lord you said for us to ask for wisdom from you, and you would give it. So I ask tonight for the mayor and all the councilmen here that you would give them wisdom from above, that there would be civil and intelligent discourse concerning whatever issues they have to discuss for our community. And I just ask for your guidance and your wisdom, and that the best thing for all of us would be accomplished tonight. Thank you that, as always, you watch over our proceedings, give us your grace. We thank you so much. In Jesus's name, you may.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mark, thank you. And I feel like the teacher, you are excused when you need to go. And Council, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda before we go on to the consent agenda. I would like for you to, under number 3B, add a Roman numeral 2 to planning and zoning. And it should read, "An ordinance to amend zoning with regard to medical marijuana-related issues." I will read that again. "An ordinance to amend zoning with regard to medical marijuana-related issues." And we will be addressing that under number 3. At this time, we have a consent agenda, which for you in the audience is really just a day-to-day business. I would entertain a motion for it.
Motion.
With that correction.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
And second by Ed. And all those in favor, would you raise your hands, please? That's unanimous, very good. And we are going to do two fun things real quick. And one of them, you're going to be surprised at. Okay, let me have that, put that right there, so I have my notes. About a month ago, the city received our new medal coins. These are challenge coins, we use them with our military and with special occasions, you know, special recognitions, for example Keith and Mike back there recently. So I said, I want to give everybody on the council one of these coins. And I want to say this, this is, we don't get paid for this. This is volunteer job. And I would tell you, I remember it well, it was a thankless job. Not too many people thank you for what you do. But tonight, the city's going to thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I got paid. Checks in the mail.
Don't spend this, it's not money. Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor. The governor's man, John.
Cecil?
Thank you.
And Bill, welcome back. Okay, very good. And my friend Bruce, where are you? Bruce, would you come up, please? So, again, as I leave office this year, every month, I'm trying to recognize people who have been supportive of the city, working to improve the city, and to be perfectly personal, people that have helped make me look really, really good. And Bruce is one of those. I recognized Bruce, I believe, last Saturday?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, at the opening of the farmer's market. And one of the things that I want to say about Bruce is that Bruce now has literally turned our farmer's market into a community farmer's market. It is the Pulaski County Farmer's Market. It's not the Waynesville Farmer's Market.
I saw people call it that, but...
They do, but we know, we know.
It's for everyone.
And of course, the SOP has been working with you and bringing Fort Leonard Wood into the story. So, many people I know helped with the farmer's market over the year, over the years, I believe you took over in 2013.
Yes, I did.
And so, tonight, I'm going to honor Bruce for being the director of the Pulaski County Farmer's Market. And just for picture purposes, I got this back. I Joe Bidened him, did y'all see that?
Always on each other's way, thirteen years.
Appreciate you, Bruce, a whole bunch.
And I appreciate the city and all the support we have. I do nothing but brag about it, because it's twelve years now. I was one of the original vendors, and they took over, and I had nothing but good stuff to say. The city is supportive 100%, and due to that, our market's grown. We have a full house this year, vendors, for the first time. We started with a full house and look forward to going on, and we'll have some more excitement to announce. I know the city's given their blessing, but right now, we're keeping it at wraps for a few more weeks till I get the paperwork done.
Okay, but I remind people, think where the farmer's market started. You know, started down in the park.
Down in the park.
In a little parking lot.
There was four of us down there for the first five years.
And when the flood happened, and we had the opportunity to create a pavilion, and some of you were on city council, you remember that we dedicated that to the farmer's market. And what a great thing that has been. So Bruce, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, this is also the time for citizens' comments. If you have anything to address the city council, you may do so at this time. Come on and come on down. And would you tell us your name, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, my name is David Carpenter, I live in Briar Point, your subdivision.
Yes.
My question is, I moved here for the second time back in December 2017. At that point, I was told, we don't have any recycle bins, we don't have any money for them. I'm still being told that to this day.
Well, let me, let me tell you the truth on that. First of all, we just got a grant for $6,000, something like that, and we are getting hundreds more. But could we get David some bins, because I think there's some in the coffee room? Tracy?
Yeah.
Well, I actually know her from bowling, and she told me that we now have money, but I was just told yesterday, when I paid my bill, that we still didn't have any money, and we were waiting on the...
Well, we're waiting on the, we're waiting on the bins.
Yeah, I did somebody borrow some back a couple days ago.
Okay. So do you have time to do that, or...
Yes.
Okay. She's going to get you bins, David.
All right.
And I'm so glad you came tonight.
Oh, no problem. I hate to sound like a complainer, but here I go.
Oh, no, no, no.
Here I go with number two.
Well, okay.
I'm recycling.
Can I say, though?
Yeah.
That I don't think that's complaining, when you come and ask questions.
You're right.
Go ahead, number two.
Number two. Why is it we don't recycle glass and steal cans?
Well, we do steal cans. I do.
Well, I thought the paperwork that I have at my house says they only do aluminum cans.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, aluminum cans. Okay, so, and Tracy?
I don't think it's cost-effective at the transfer station, and that's where they go, so I don't think it's cost-effective to do so.
Well, and they don't have a market for the glass.
Yeah, that's, that's why you're talking cost-effective.
You still can do it, you just got to drop it on.
Transfer station doesn't take glass, but the one on Fort Worth does.
Yes, my friend, I have a roommate right now, and she very much into recycling, and she collects our glass and takes it out to Fort Leonard Wood. So, we've answered all your questions, David.
Oh, no, I still got two more.
Oh, you got two more, okay. Hit it, hit it, bud.
All right. Number three. In our subdivision, there is, by some people, and if I'm mistaken, you can correct me, we have, we're supposed to keep your property in good order or stuff. We got people that got their grass way up here. And with all the rain we've had this year, all it's doing is collecting bugs and critters and stuff like that. So, and I thought we had a program where notices were sent out.
We do.
There is a program where notices are sent out, several days to follow. And if they have the right at a certain period of time to cut the grass and put a charge to their property on their property tax bill. That whole process takes a little bit of time, it's not instantaneous, and they do have the right to appeal and other things. If there's a property that we may have missed, you can always let us know, and we'll send somebody out to...
There's one in particular I'm thinking about, it's on Ellis Street. It's been that way for a year.
Please don't mention the property, please don't mention the property here, but you can tell us later about the property.
And that's what you have city councilmen for. Sorry, war three. There were three, raise your hand. Okay, there's your war three. But that's what you have them for, and they will help you. I tried to put that in the newsletter, that all you, it was called building official, David, and make a complaint, we'll take care of it.
Then the fourth thing I got, it's not really, well, it's kind of related to the city, but but I have an issue with Waynesville PD being on I-44, trying to catch speeders, because I know we don't have that many officers as it is, and they should be taking care of our citizens instead of trying to catch speeders on the interstate.
Okay.
Because, for instance, about a month ago, there was an accident. The patrolman was out on I-44 writing a ticket, and there was an accident right here on I-Cord Avenue, and there were civilians directing traffic, because he was busy writing speeding tickets on the interstate.
Well, I don't know if that's necessarily true, but I want to tell you what I found out, okay? First of all, the land outside Waynesville, the land outside St. Robert, has been annexed by the city, so that we do have the right to do that, because this is all the mileage. I looked into this one time, David, and I want you to know, very few tickets are given on the interstate. And we looked them up, and every one of them were over 90 miles an hour. So I would think that maybe you want those people to slow down just a little bit, and that's why they're there. But I believe I asked the chief, Bruce, that, you know, and he said they're not there at all.
You know, Mayor, there's very few tickets on the interstate at our occasion, but we do have the right and somewhat the obligation to patrol the city and make sure that the speed limit is being obeyed inside the city. And I've, I-44, there's an area we've annexed in, and that can be dangerous to people in our area to go over 90 miles an hour on that road.
And I totally agree with that, it's just, I'm retired military, I've lived lots of other places. City cops in every other state I've lived in are not allowed to write tickets on the interstate.
But that's not true in...
I know it's not true, that's why I said, in this case, it's not true.
But honestly, because I looked that up, David, because I had some complaints, and that's the information I found out. And I would not give to you.
And the highway patrol, or state highway patrol, asked that cities would be more involved with the...
If they were asked, it's just, I know we don't have a lot of officers.
Right.
The particular incident question a month ago just kind of struck me, when we had four regular people out there directing traffic.
And that was coincidental, too.
Yeah.
The last item I had, like I said, I've lived here before, I understand this new utility policy of holding your deposit for the rest of your life until you close your... I don't understand. When I lived here, you were giving it back on your bill, and then it was done, and you didn't have to do anything.
That policy didn't work very good. We had losses, a lot of losses in the two... We're still at risk on that, but there are people that move out and, believe it or not, don't pay their utility bill. And so the other people that end up paying their utility bill would have to absorb that cost. So we have a little bit stronger policy on utility bills that holds the utility, the person themselves more responsible.
And I understand that. However, my suggestion would be, lived in a lot, like I said, retired military, a lot of bases, I do not know if this base has one, I did clear this base twice, so I kind of have a little knowledge. You had to clear the utility department on post. If you did not pay your bill in the town outside of post, they would not clear you, and you could not PCS.
But that, we all have the military behind us, David.
I know that, but we do send a lot of reports to the military, it's not like we do not send them information already. So, a little other information, I don't, because I think it's an undue burden, let's say for me, for instance, me and my wife die in an accident, God forbid, then my kids have to come down here and collect my $560, which is an undue burden to them, because the utility deposit is never returned to you until you close your account or you die. I just don't understand.
But again, but again, let me say, we don't deal with just military, we deal with a lot of other people.
Mayor, also, we cannot expect the military to collect their bills for us.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, it's not in the past, if they do it on clearing, but that doesn't, believe me, we've had lots of military people leave us with a bill.
I know this, that's why the other posts have this policy, and they won't let them leave post until you tell them that their bill is paid.
Nobody has asked us about that.
Fort Hood, Fort Benning.
Maybe I need to look into that.
They all do.
Maybe I need to look into that, David.
Right now, we don't have that, so we have to get tough when they leave. Would you rather that we, every time somebody leaves and doesn't have a paid bill, that they put that on your utility bill?
I would not like that, however, I would not like to hold me responsible, because, and vice versa, that I wouldn't hold my money for the rest of my life, because I don't plan on leaving Waynesville, I plan on paying it until I die.
That's good.
So I, I don't think that I should have to give the city of Waynesville $550 until I die.
Really, you're not giving it to the city, you're giving it to those other people that aren't paying their bills. If you jumped...
I'm also retired military, I've cleared Fort Hood, Fort Campbell, a whole lot of places. Those places have military waiver programs. Somebody is responsible and stuff like that on the post, and, you know, obviously, they know more about backgrounds than other places. But Fort Leonard Wood doesn't have a waiver program. Like, for me to pay my deposit at Fort Hood, when I lived off the Stan Shuler Loop, I went on post, they ran my credit, they ran a whole bunch of other stuff on post, they gave me a waiver to take down to the utilities department, which put Fort Hood responsible for my deposit instead of the city of Kalina.
Never heard such thing, you know.
Fort Leonard Wood doesn't have a waiver program, so they leave it up to the individual responsibility.
You know, we do, though, we do allow, if you have a record, you're going that you paid in good faith, and you bring that to us, then your deposits are reduced.
See, I wasn't told that when I came back, because I lived here before, I got a waiver when I left here to go to my next place, because I never, didn't pay my bill, and I could have gotten a waiver from my prior elected company, saying, when I went to the utility company, they said, this is the deposit, you have to pay it. They never said anything about it.
You, Laura, you showed, you know, a good... Address more deeply. Look at your account and find out what the deal is. We, basically, so, the Army is not responsible for collecting our bills for us, and we have to, you know, have some policies that makes the utility user themselves responsible.
Sorry.
Okay.
You have asked some great questions, and I appreciate you being here.
No problem.
We always say to people, if you've got questions, but now, I do want to tell you, David, that we do use the committee system here in Waynesville, and so you're welcome to come to our committee meetings, that's where people sit, and you can actually talk about these things.
Well, actually, it's being your fault that I'm here, because I asked them, I said, when's the city council meeting? He goes, oh, it's tomorrow night, by the way.
But anyway, we appreciate that, and hopefully, we answered your questions, and that's what we're supposed to do.
Appreciate it.
If you go to the city's website, it'll tell you every committee meeting, time and date, you know, so that you can put it on your calendar.
Very good, very good, thank you.
And every councilman's phone number, and what war... Trust me, I know that's there.
Every, everyone has a phone number. Anybody else want to address the council? Okay, and at this time, we're going to carry on with our board and commission meetings. And Lawrence, you're the first one. So Lawrence, come on up, and Lawrence, tell us about Kids in the Park.
I only got six questions for you. Kids, Kids in the Park is, of course, Saturday, and we have over thirty, I know that for a fact, my signature's over there. But anyway, we have over, I think there's like, what, thirty-three, Sean, something like that.
Vendors.
We have thirty-three vendors that's going to be there. And they're from churches, RC from Crawford, Master Gardeners, there's going to be all kinds of people, there are plenty to do. So make sure that everybody gets, there are kids out there, and if you're a kid, too, show up, there are plenty for those of us. We had our park board meeting on May 9th at 6:00, right here in the municipal building, it was scheduled to be in the park, but we had bad weather, so we rescheduled bringing it up here. We did have a forum, only one member was missing. April minutes were approved as written. Our visitors was Clarence Liberty and our WSR sports intern, Gunnar Reese. Gunnar is an intern, he showed up and was introduced to us, and we're glad to have him as an intern, helping out the sports program, especially since Nikki has gone through a process where she will be limited in any of the things that she does. Right after he, Gunnar, was introduced, he had to run to a soccer game, he had to go participate in. Next thing was Pulaski County Gardeners. Mrs. Olstead reported to the board that the Master Gardeners announced the weather is better, will begin work, plus they have all their paperwork in order. And also, the VA does have the Coast 3168 Boy Scouts have seats for them, they're going to be getting together. And then also, the city will be getting together with them about putting in a walk up to the top of the hill down there. Next report we had was the sports program. There have been lots of cancellations because of the weather. And some of those cancellations could not have been made up because baseball and softball is kicking in, so they're working on that.
And I hate that.
I do, too.
And I know a lot of parents were upset about it, but, you know, ninety percent of the park property in America sits in bloodplanes.
Yeah.
And ours does.
Yeah.
And you can't get out there and slop around, even playing soccer, so...
To go along with that, I do have a personal comment on that. Since last week, there has been incidences in the field where people are going out there when they're still muddy and messing them up, which messes up the schedules that they have to cancel, too, because they can't play on them. There was an incident about a vehicle going on the field. So, like we've had to do ever since I've been coming to city council meetings, we have to let the public know, please do not go on the field with your vehicles, and please do not mess up the fields when they are wet. That's just a simple thing. The summer baseball totals are from, are up from 233, up to 284 now. And so we got really great participation. They're fundraising, they are participating, of course, in the world-famous candy sales, and I've already hit a few of you up there, some of them kind of mumbled in their breath, which I apologize for, I won't name Clarence. But as of, let's see, as of the meeting last week, we had eighty-five boxes left. Well, I checked into it yesterday, there's now seventy-three boxes left. We have two new interns. I know we did get to meet Austin, but Austin is selling candy like it's his. He is doing a great job.
Very good.
He keeps coming back in and giving them, and selling them out there. The monies raised so far as of yesterday are well over $6,000.
Very good.
So they're doing very well. And they do plan on having a fundraiser, it's scheduled at Freddy's, I guess that's that new restaurant up in St. Robert's, on July 16th. And there is future plans to repeat the Donald's fundraiser, because it worked so well last And now, a park superintendent trade report, he's the assistant supervisor, reason for that is Mr. Brown had a procedure himself, and he's on doctor's orders to stay away, so, which is a smart thing to do. So I think Trey's been doing a really good job, we'll start off with embarrassing Trey, especially if you watch it, it already embarrassed you a lot. He was on Channel 3 out of Springfield, he was interviewed, and that was a week ago, last Friday. And it's not just Trey that they had good things to say about, it was the city of Waynesville.
But he did a really good job.
They talked about how Waynesville found a problem in 2013 during the big flood, and how the city councils and everybody got together and come up with a solution, and these last few floods we had, it's been easier work for everybody to get the park back into shape, which works out really well. We did have our last flood, and on April 30th, the RV park was evacuated because of the floodwaters, and there was damage to a couple electric pedestals in there and to the road. It came up really high in the farmer's market, which was just not very far from the day that they had the grand opening, as Bruce knows about, and Mayor and everybody. They, the crew, Trey and the crew, went over there, they got that place cleaned up, the place looked great, I participated in the opening, and I'm very proud of that crew for doing the work they did.
Very good.
And the Splash Park is scheduled, it's on schedule to be opened up on the 24th, which is the day, I guess that's the day before Memorial Weekend, so. And the events coming up, of course, we've already talked about, National Kids to Park Day, Saturday, May 18th, between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. There'll be over thirty vendors, as I said, and I can't remember who the group was, it's giving bags away, because there's going to be a lot of things given out.
Cool.
And so there will be bags there at the beginning, and I think everybody signs in.
City of, city of Waynesville, those...
City of Waynesville, those, the bags for the airport, is what he's trying to talk about.
From the airport.
Very good.
And so, they'll be able to put all their goodies in there. There'll be some goodies a little bit bigger than the bag, though, I've got to tell you that it is, right. So, anyway, everybody participate, please.
I will be there. You know, if I'd thought about it in time, I could have invited Cropper to come.
That'd been a good idea.
Maybe we'll talk about that. Sean?
Okay, we got, there's the Summit Park, I've already talked about the RV park. So, the Summit Park, everything that we voted on last month has been ordered, the plans are already in the process, and when the crews can get together and go up there to do the expansion and set the new equipment in there, we will be having an opening. I hope the mayor and some other people would like to be there for the opening. We're gonna have barbecue catered in.
I'll be there.
A barbecue, dude.
I'll walk all the way down there.
You gotta walk up there, that's at the Summit Park.
He lives there.
Oh, well, then you're walking down.
So, something that was not in your report in Amber, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we got a grant to put in some tables in our...
That was not brought up at our meeting, that's why we're...
We applied for a grant.
Oh, we applied for a grant. I apologize. I apologize. We applied.
That's what Bruce told me, it was applied for.
Fingers crossed, okay.
Right.
So that we can get some tables and benches.
We're looking for two tables per park.
Very good.
Right.
Okay.
And the dog sanitation stations were ordered, we're planning on putting one, of course, I said this last month, RV park and over by the sports, that area over there. And they have been a success.
Very good.
And we got together and decided we're gonna start having some working lunches. Our first one's next Tuesday at 11:00 at the Ocean.
At the Ocean buffet?
Yes, ma'am.
I might be there, too.
Okay.
Just joking, just joking. You guys are amazing, Lawrence, and your whole group have just been amazing. Their meetings to the parks and, you know, opened up to the public so much, and, you know, you're just gonna do a great job. And you and Sean both have really laid the groundwork.
Well, Sean started a lot of the things that we're continuing, so I thank him for that.
Very good. Are you through?
Our next meeting, we adjourned at 6:25, probably one of the quickest meetings I ever attended. The next meeting will be held at the City Pavilion 1 on June 13th. Hopefully, it doesn't rain this time, or we can make the pair this time.
Very good. Any questions for Lawrence? Anybody?
I only have six.
All of our feud won.
Okay. For the Kids to the Park Day, have we been able to get a hold of 98.9 or 103.9 or anything like that?
That would be, Sean could tell you that.
So we can get some people on the radio and talk about it?
Yeah, we talked to Fortwood, the radio station here.
98.9?
Yeah. And they said they're gonna announce it. We actually asked them to come down, and they said they couldn't do that.
But I'm just worried about like, a week before, or a couple of days before, getting some people on the radio that can talk intelligently about Kids to the Park Day, thirty-three vendors and stuff.
Right. And Sean, you could call PFLW and ask for Gary, and Gary would do that for you. And I'm sure that PFLW would, too.
And then, Channel 12, you know, like a rolling thing that just comes up every now and then on Channel 12.
We've only got one more day to make a phone call.
You've got to get busy tomorrow.
Yeah, get busy.
And my other one was about the dog sanitation stations. Are those the enzyme ones where they put it in there and the enzymes eat it away, or are they bagged?
They're bagged, and they go around and collect them.
Okay.
I did have, I'm sure it was an accident, oversight on Beamer's car.
On the can?
Yes. I buy them every park meeting and then hand them out to the board, the board members and the people out in the audience.
That is an oversight.
Thank you. Thank you, Lawrence. We appreciate that. Well, we do try to have a little fun here, Bill. Back when you were on years ago, we didn't have... We do have planning and zoning next, and before we do that, I want to make just a couple of comments about some of the things that are going on in our community. And I just, maybe we'll repeat a couple of things, I'll try to make it as quickly as I can. I would just like to remind everybody that the city of Waynesville has been proactive in looking at the medical marijuana issue. I would also like to say that the city of Waynesville is not an advocate for medical marijuana, they're being cooperative. We are following state law. And like many of our neighbors around us, there's a concern concerning zoning, police ordinances, personnel issues. I will tell you that we have had phone calls from many of our neighbors asking us for help and suggestions, as they address this thing, too. And then, I want to say one thing about our letter of intent that we accepted at our special meeting for Missouri Essentials. I would like the public to know that we believe that was the best solution to this issue. Here is an ideal location to keep it off of Main Street, to keep it out of our residential areas. And in fact, to fit the zoning at the time, that was the proper place to do it. You know, we, and maybe I shouldn't say this, I'm getting in trouble from the lawyer and everything, but we've had three companies, I believe three, approach us about this issue. And I know one of them was looking at a spot downtown Waynesville. So, in my opinion, this has done a good thing for our community, because it has somewhat isolated that. And people who have those medical cards, they'll be the ones that will know where that location is, where our location is. You have to look really hard to even see it, okay? And so, I wanted to say that. We're gonna follow the law, and we're gonna be ready. And then, to address a couple of things that have been on social media, and I would just remind everybody that we are in a new age with social media. It is a new day, when you can get on social media and say anything you darn well please about anybody, and especially if they're in the public eye. I'm gonna tell you this, the city of Waynesville has one philosophy. It is to tell the truth, and that's what we have done. I have, for the first time in my life ever, been called a drug dealer, a pothead. Oh, I love this one, you're immoral. Oh, my goodness. How far can you go? I've been called disgraceful. And then, this afternoon, someone called me sneaky. I've never been called sneaky. You guys that know me know there's, I don't hide too much. I just come out and say it. And we have, let me tell you, we have not been sneaky about this. This was a real estate deal. There were certain things we couldn't talk about in public. Have you talked about real estate deals to the public when you're trying to make the deal? And so, you know, from January on, your mayor discussed this issue, and I discussed it on the radio. I discussed it in our news, you know, our media releases. All those things. And, you know, these days, you kind of have to be a little, work a little hard to find information. And, you know, Daryl up here is our blogger for the community, he reported the things that we were doing. So, I wanted to say that, too. I feel much better now. That was like therapy. And I do know that Bruce also has some things that he'd like to discuss, Cecil, before we do our report. Bruce?
Sure, mayor, just kind of want to follow up on some of the things you said and address some of the issues that were brought up at the public hearing and after the public hearing. And as you mentioned, many cities are doing the same steps, and I've talked to city administrators in Rawl and Sullivan and other areas. And we've given our ordinance out to other people, and they're all very similar. We're all seeking ways to regulate medical marijuana in our communities. Couple things that, you know, a couple things I want to follow up on, and one issue brought up at the public hearing was the banking issue. And the issue was that banks cannot take the medical marijuana funds due to, between the federal and state laws. Well, I followed up with Paul Bocchi, who's with Missouri Essentials. And he, that's a company that's interested in the building in our industrial park and signed the letter of intent. They told me they're ahead of the power curve on this, they have a bank to take their deposits, and the problem has been addressed successfully before in other states. And, you know, there's ways to handle this, and the bank they're working with has got a means to handle it. They understand the concern that brought up with our local banks due to the conflict with the federal law. So, they've solved that problem. You know, I'm not saying there might be some continued issues and reporting they'll have to do, but they assured me they're gonna take their money, deposit it in a bank. Of course, one of the issues that was brought up was about the city of Waynesville. Of course, the city of Waynesville would receive tax money and probably utility money, just like other cities in Missouri will receive. I think the county would receive property tax money and sales tax money as well, so they would have a similar issue. So, there was a concern about the city funds. I talked to Mr. Dunbar, who's, of course, the president of Security Bank, where we have our funds with, and he assured me, the first conversation, he said, "Well, he's gonna work to solve the problem." A little bit later, he called me and said, he's very confident, he's had some discussions with the FDIC and other regulators, and he's very confident that the deposit relationship with the city is in good standing, so to speak. So, I don't think we have to worry about that issue. And like I say, that would affect many cities and the county, record co-ops and everybody else, if you couldn't accept any money from one of these medical marijuana facilities. Another issue I wanted to kind of discuss is, on one of the social media talked about sanctions, that the city could face sanctions, the city of Waynesville, and, you know, report us to the federal, you know, the federal attorneys. I've researched, and I find no evidence that any city in any of the thirty-three states that have medical marijuana or other marijuana laws have received any sanctions from the federal government as regards to grants or any other type of activity. So, I don't feel there, I feel the chance that Waynesville would be singled out of all the cities in the nation, including Washington, D.C. I found that very, that would, very remote, that that would ever happen. So, I'd like to kind of put that to rest. One of the issues discussed was regarding security. And Mr. Bocchi assured me that his security plan is gonna exceed the state standard. And I talked to our own chief of police and our detective sergeant, and they feel that our industrial park is the best location in the city. And they, frankly, they like the ability that our police could have a facility in Waynesville that they could check on. They said, "If it's out in the county, we won't be able to inspect it or check on it, we won't be able to ensure that, you know, the top standards." So, I feel that the security issue is also being addressed. And of course, there's gonna be opportunities for probably retired MPs and police officers who want a part-time job to serve as security at some of those facilities. So, I believe those were two issues that were, that were discussed at the meeting. Of course, seeing social media, there's been a host of, you know, comments about medical marijuana. And I know that a lot of people have different opinions about this issue, but it seems like there's far too many personal attacks. And I just want to say, you know, I've heard people say it's illegal, immoral, and unethical, and I disagree. And I feel that everything we've done is legal and according to state law, and very moral and ethical. And I think we should feel confident in the ordinance that we have before us, and I don't think we should listen to those naysayers that may not understand all aspects of this issue. And I'm gonna say this is a state law, and while there's challenges at the federal level, I think we still need to move forward and be proactive with this matter in the city of Waynesville.
Very good. Okay, and again, we'll save our comments for later. Cecil, we have planning and zoning report, and we do have an action at the end of that.
Okay. We held the Planning and Zoning Commission on... We held the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on the 14th. Everybody was in attendance, Chairman Cryer, who is also here in the audience, I'd like to thank you for coming to the council meeting. Called the meeting to order at 5:30. There was a forum. We approved the minutes from the last planning and zoning meeting. Chairman Cryer made opening comments, discussed that sixty-six percent of the voting population of Missouri did approve the amendment to the Missouri Constitution. So, we went through, we did opening comments, the city administrator made comments, very similar to what he just made. And then, we had the public hearing, and we had comments by Mr. Morrissey, Mr. Pritchard. Both of them had concerns with the banking and the zoning regulations. They brought very good things, which Bruce has researched since then, as well as there was other comments from Mr. Johnston. He talked about some things about different states and things, and the 300-foot rule. It could be from zero to 1,000. The city was being extremely proactive with the 300-foot rule, and that's what was discussed in the meeting. Chairman Cryer went out of the public hearing, and we talked about security issues, as well as the 300-foot rule. After that, we made the amendment to send the ordinance 2366 to the city council for approval. I want to say the city is being extremely proactive, and that's what this ordinance is. There'll be obviously no ordinances.
Very good. I just would like staff to spell Mr. Pritchard's name correctly. It has a T in it. Are there any questions for Cecil? Anybody? All right. We have an ordinance to address tonight. Counselor, get ready.
Yes.
This is ordinance 2366, and it does come to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 405 relating to zoning of the Miss Laco de the City of Waynesville with regard to medical marijuana-related issues fixing an effective date. An ordinance amending Chapter 405 relating to zoning of the Miss Laco de the City of Waynesville with regard to medical marijuana-related issues fixing an effective date.
Very good. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Clarence, second by Sean. And are there any other questions or discussions, Mr. Harold? Anything? I believe we've discussed the ordinance quite well, and it's going through our counselor.
If there's any questions, you know, establishes the minimum distance, establishes the zoning districts that different facilities can go in, basically prohibits onsite partaking of medical marijuana and the hours of operation of the different businesses. So, that's kind of a quick rundown.
I've got a question, mayor.
Yes.
Do we have a copy of what the state has been working on, on this issue?
Just draft regs, only at this point, the state regulations...
This is just part of it. We have copies of many, 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 many things, yes.
My follow-up question is, if this passes and somebody wants to purchase medical marijuana, does it have to be from a doctor within the state of Missouri, the prescription was written?
Well, I was gonna say, the state regulation don't become final until June 4th. So, we'll have to review the state regs after they're finally adopted by the State Department of Health.
June 4th. And again, a lot of this stuff is really not concerned to us.
Right.
I believe that's proper to say.
I think that's right.
But, you know, obviously, there's going to be rules.
I believe you're correct. I think I have the rules here, I just have to go through them and see what the rules are for the different doctors. But I believe it does have to be a doctor from the state of Missouri, but I'll have to check that out.
I'm hearing, Ralph, I'm hearing good things about, is it Prager, the man who's in charge of the...
I don't know.
He's the guy that's in charge, I believe he's from Marshfield.
Okay. I don't know that.
But I'm hearing good things about him in that they have looked at these other states and tried to bring the good things from the other states, so it'll be interesting to see what they finally come up with.
Yeah, most of what we've done is in the Missouri Constitution, however, there are some rules and regulations that come final...
Just... Okay, anything else? All right, Madam Clark, what you call the role?
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conner.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
That ordinance passes unanimously. And moving on to our standing committees, Councilman France, tell us about roads and grounds.
We called the meeting to order at 4:30 on the 2nd of May.
We called the meeting to order at 4:30 on the 2nd of May. We first started off with a letter from a couple of citizens congratulating our roads people for some of the work they've done in their neighborhoods. We found that parking around the square, that has been, no tickets been issued or anything like that, but warnings and stuff like that. And if you've been around the square, you've noticed that parking is available now to a much larger extent. Recreational trail grant update, the archaeological study has been completed, been forwarded to the state historic preservation office, and once we get, receive their approval letter, we'll submit the National Environmental Protection Agency review to DNR, which is, that's the next step. That's all requirements of this trail grant. Street department updates, we've spent just shy 13,000 materials for sealing cracks throughout the street, through streets and throughout... We've worked on work orders completed as well, as long with sealing. MoDoc updates, Mayor Harbin asked for an update on MoDoc projects. Mr. Harold stated he'd received an email from MoDoc that the portion of the land that they are donating is valued at over $700,000. He stated that we also... The speed of it on I-44 to 60 miles, moving the area where cars stop at the stoplight on GW Lane due to multiple near misses with other vehicles by semi trucks trying to make that turn. He said that Preston would forward these requests to the...
That 60 mile per hour is going down the, what I call the Waynesville Hill, out of St. Robert.
Coming down the hill, because they're 18-wheelers. They've just come down the coast, help you hit an 80 and 90 by the time. That's why you always see them crash down there at the bottom and stuff.
Sad.
We forwarded the road paving update. We said, go ahead and do GW Lane and two other streets within the community. The flood update Mr. Harold gave us, from 13, where we had over a million dollars in damage, this last flood is appraised at about $20,000 in damage based on mitigation things we've been through since 13. So that really is working for us. Other business, as we did on the 7th, we had the special council meeting where our letter of intent was brought forward, and the CDGB payoff, made a motion to go ahead and pay off the building. Having no further business, I close the meeting at 5:34. Time to hear questions.
Very good. Questions for Mike? We'll deal with the spec building thing here under finance.
Yep.
Okay, Mike, keep talking. Utilities.
I called the utility committee to order 3/7. I was once again re-elected as chairman of the utilities committee. Proposed agreement on Northern Heights Water Tank, basically, we approved moving forward on the new water tank, buying a new water tank. It'll be a mirror of the one that's currently on Sunset. We found that the other type of water tower that we had originally planned for was going to be way too expensive based upon the engineering for the platform it had to sit on. So we are in the process of getting the water tank ordered, and at our next meeting, we'll know approximately what in-house costs are going to be when we're bringing that to them. Results of the electric pole inspections, we allocated just shy of $8,000 to test our electrical poles, and we've been through just shy of 500 of them, and we found that 14 of them look perfectly good on that portion out of the ground. That portion underground, which they brought us pictures of, had been seriously deteriorated to where they could have been, they were rotten really bad. So we've got 14 poles that we're replacing, and then we have a plan on the other ones. And next year, we will have the money to finish the inspections of the rest of our poles. Well, number two rebuilt, that is the one down in the flood plain, just between the funeral home and the farmer's market, is sitting down in that wooded area. It has consistently flooded, and so we're going, and the building is in really bad shape, so where we have allocated basically about 30, just shy of $36,000 to basically lift it.
Eight feet?
Up, out of the flood plain, put a brand-new building in there. When we do that, we've also now got to lift the well and those kind of, the components inside there to keep it, take it out of the flood plain. And that's scheduled to start June 3rd.
Very good.
Department updates, flood report, as I stated before, minor damage, about $20,000 total in the city. Electrical outage report showing we had three outages for the month, and if you notice some flashes in your lights and stuff like that, you know, we put in some reclosers throughout the city, and they have really saved us on long-term outages. If that flashes comes back on, our reclosers have really been helping out. Mr. Harold stated that three employees, Mr. Eldridge, Robert Moreau, and Josh Sharpenstein, they were going to school for their A-18 certifications in wastewater, and all three of them went to school, all three of ours passed.
Yoo-hoo!
So that gives us much more qualified people. Water sewer department, Mayor Harbin stated his department has 11 work orders, seven service lines repaired, two main links replaced, one center, and four sewer work orders and jetted one line. Gas department, George, they're currently walking our underground gas lines with our sniffer, checking them out, making sure they're still in good shape. Mr. Sheldon stayed in the electric department, that they had three outages, seven street light work orders, four tree work orders, five miscellaneous, and installed three new services, and have been repairing some lawns that we had to tear up when it was working based upon how wet it was. We didn't have necessary for a closed session. That motion was made by Councilman Conley to go into closed session at 4 o'clock, and we came out at 4:46. And since when you're in closed session, it doesn't matter what you're talking about, you cannot do any votes to do anything inside a closed session. So everything comes out of closed session for any votes that's got to be done. We approved the proposed settlement agreement when we came out with MoGas pipeline to forward that to the council, which we did on the 7th. And Councilman Wilson made the motion to approve the resolution to submit the intergovernmental service agreement for trash and recycling services regarding Fort Leonard Wood, and moved toward forward to the city council for approval. Councilman Conley seconded and all were in favor. Having no further business, meeting adjourned at 4:27 PM. Our next meeting is June 4th at 3:30 PM here in City Hall. Time to hear questions.
Very good. Mike, my compliments to you. You did a wonderful job on both those reports.
Well, thank you.
Everybody taking lessons, right? Okay, Cecil, you did a great job.
I've been working on it for about six, eight years.
Really, really did. So I appreciate that. We do have a resolution that we're going to ask you to look at here in just a moment, and I'll just say one word, and then I'll let Mr. Harold discuss it. This is what we have been working on with Fort Leonard Wood for several months, actually, where both cities, and in fact, all other cities, have been working with them, trying to come up with some intergovernmental agreements which would save the Army money. And this is obviously something that our community wants to be part of, and this one concerns trash and recycling. Mr. Harold.
Okay, Mary, of course, we did quite a few things jointly on Fort Leonard Wood with our joint airport, with St. Robert, with our animal shelter, of course, with Esports. And we're still in kind of in the research stage, but we're working on submitting a proposal for some intergovernmental support agreements, ones for the trash, for trash and recycling, and we're looking at that. And we got a meeting, in fact, next week with Fort Leonard Wood officials to go over some draft proposals. So this kind of gives us the authority to kind of do forward to keep on researching and working out the numbers for those proposals, to eventually submit a proposal to Fort Leonard Wood and take it from there.
Very good. And of course, most of you are aware of this because it's been through your committees. This takes a lot of work. Of course, Mr. Harold and his staff have put a lot of effort into this. And so we have a resolution, it does not have a number on my paper. It's 2019-005. 2019-005, this is a resolution of the city of Waynesville to submit intergovernmental service agreements regarding Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri. And are there any questions or, well, I'll see. I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
By Ed down there. And are there any questions or comments? And again, we have been discussing this in committee for some time. Madam Clark, what you call the role?
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman France.
Yes.
Very good. That's unanimous, and that resolution passes, and we will move forward with that presentation to Fort Leonard Wood. We now have our Finance and Human Resources Committee, that is Councilman Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 5 o'clock. We reviewed the bills, motion was made by Councilman Curtis to approve bills and seconded by Councilman Davis. Vote was called at 18:00. Monthly budget review, Mr. Harold is going to cover that in his report. Resolution accepting 2018 audit, Mr. Harold reported, received the audit back. It was a good audit. Assets exceeded liabilities. We decreased our liabilities and was able to complete early payoff of Highway H Water System. Ordinance to pay off spec building, Mr. Harold reported it best for the city to pay the loan off early. By doing this, we would be able to reduce the amount of interest paid, and we will plan and reserve funds for the payoff. Rent program is updated, Volkswagen, Amber Box reported, everything is up to date. We hope to have a truck by June and receive our monies by the end of June. Recycling, Amber has worked on a tire grant that would provide six picnic tables and benches made out of recycled tires. They would be placed in community parks. Park grant and Amber informed committee that all necessary reports have been submitted, and after DNR's final approval, we should be ready to start work by late summer. Mr. Harold stated there was a need for closed session for legal personnel and real estate. Vote was called, we went into closed session. Committee returned at 5:35 PM. With no further business coming before the committee, we adjourned at 5:40. Next meeting will be held June 13th, 2019.
Very good. Questions for Clarence? And of course, out of that closed meeting came something that we're going to address. First of all, we need to accept the audit report, and Mr. Harold, do you have anything to add to the audit report that Clarence didn't cover?
Yes, I'd like to actually hit some of the highlights of the audit.
Very good.
I'll just hit one page, and if you'll turn to page, I believe it's page 7. I think that sums it up pretty good. We increased our position of the city by 947,000. The total liabilities of the city are loans, basically, were decreased by two point, a little over 2.5 million. Of course, we paid off early one of our loans for the Highway H Water Utility, and we've aggressively reduced debt. We kept our A-stable rate with standard and force, which is good for a small city. And our sales tax revenue, according to our audit, increased between 7 and 8% over the previous fiscal year. And our utility revenue increased 4 to 5% over the last fiscal year, too. So those are just a few of the highlights. Of course, there's on page 13 and on, it tells about all the projects we did in the city with our budget money. And I'd like to commend Stephanie and her staff for doing a great job with the financial management of the city and preparing our city for these annual audits.
We always get complimented by the KPM people who come in and say, oh, things in order. Could I say, though, the increase on the utilities was, we didn't increase anything, it was the weather.
Yes, the weather had a huge role in the utility income.
Yeah. So this is our audit. I do have a resolution. This is Resolution 2019-006, a resolution accepting the audit report for the year ending December 31st, 2018. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion over here by Curtis, and second by Cecil. And Madam Clark, what you call the role?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman...
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Yay for us on the audit. That's always good news. We also have an ordinance, and I would, I'm going to let Mr. Harold discuss this in just a moment after we take a motion for it. This is also a very good thing for our community. It's ordinance number 2365.
Payoff of a community development block grant loan for the purchase of a speculated building located in Waynesville Industrial Park by the city of Waynesville fixing and effective date. An ordinance for payoff of a community development block grant loan for the purchase of a speculated building located in the Waynesville Industrial Park by the city of Waynesville fixing and effective date.
Very good. We misspelled Waynesville there if you'd want to change that. I'm sure that was just an error. So I would entertain a motion. Motion by Jerry, and second by Mike France down here. And Bruce, I'm going to let you discuss this and for the public, especially, several committees.
Okay, Mary, we did, of course, built the spec building with a low-interest loan, basically, from the Department of Economic Development with the state of Missouri. And we've, of course, had that building, we've been marketing for a time, intent for it, and I believe we're recommending that we go ahead and pay off this loan and stop paying interest on it. And we have enough money in our reserve funds to do so, and to respond to any emergency situation. So we recommend, and we're getting, the department would like us to pay that off, too. I think it's an open program right now, and we would not be able to get any more new grants through that department until we close out this one. So we're recommending that we go ahead and pay off this loan and get the spec building, you know, totally in our name. I think we secured it with a letter of credit from Security Bank, and some of our lots in the industrial park as well, so...
So it'll free those up?
Yeah, would free those up as well. So we'd like to kind of get this done in preparation. Hopefully, we're going to get some job creation out of this building in the near future.
So I would just remind the public, if you read our newsletters, that we do have over $3 million in our reserves, and as Mr. Harold said, we think that's a good use of our money, because, you know, we're making like 1%, and we're paying like whatever, 4% or whatever. So it's a good use of our money. And so, again, this has been through several committees. We had a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Madam Clark, what you call the role?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. Okay, we now have our police committee or emergency services, and we're going to also hear again from Councilman Liberty.
Tim Barrier, we received an email from him. Mr. Harold said he was talked to by the manager of Price Cutter. His concern was semi trucks parking in the parking lot causing asphalt damage due to their weight. We really need to have the Price Cutter manager come talk to the city instead of doing the deal. Proposed ordinances on marijuana. Mr. Harold presented three proposed ordinances for the committee to review, including possession or consumption, possession of drug paraphernalia, open marijuana container. Mr. Harold stated he is not asking for any action at this time, but the committee review that. Discussion regarding animal control and leash law ordinances. Mr. Harold stated his staff is currently researching this and will bring more information in a future meeting. Proposed ordinance to keep bees in residential area. Proposed ordinance to keep bees in residential area. Mr. Harold presented a draft ordinance to the committee for review. Enforcing parking spaces. Chief Cordova stated department hasn't issued a warning in two weeks. And Mayor Hardeman stated she received multiple positive knowledge from citizens and businesses. Police department update, special infix torch run, April 10th. It was a success. Canine training, chief stated that both canine officers were currently at that time at national certification training and should return to duty by the end of the week. Grants, chief stated that department received lifespan grant in the amount of $18,125 for a workstation that could be used to fingerprint. This is for the total replacement of the current system. Department also received two grants from MoDOT for total amount of $23,190 to help pay for officers to do more DWI enforcement and traffic enforcement. Other business, Mr. Harold stated that recent flood caused the city to evacuate the Ruby D U R V Park. He stated the city staff is working to get farmer's market area cleaned and I must add, they did an excellent job and had it ready for use on Saturday. Mr. Harold stated there had been concern from citizens about absence of storm siren. He stated in the past, it was very expensive to purchase and maintain the siren. He stated with extreme cost of the sirens and high repair cost, the city decided to do code red alert. And that is still available. I receive those alerts every time there's an emergency. There was a need for closed session. Dr. Brown made a motion entering closed session. I second, motion passed. Business for taking care of councilman, Brown made a motion to return to open session. I second, motion passed. Committee returned to open session at 4:19 PM, having no further business. I adjourn the meeting at 4:20. Next scheduled meeting will be June 6th at 3:30 PM.
Very good. Just two comments. Number one is the sirens and we are discussing that in our committees, trying to see if that is an option for us in the future to replace those. I, some of you were on city council when lightning struck the two remaining sirens and I remember, what was it, $15,000 they wanted before they would even come and look at repairing them? It was ridiculous and that's really kind of why we decided to, since we live in a valley, that we would go with code red. So, again, we're kind of discussing it and we'll carry that through with your committee. The other thing I wanted to be sure and say is thank you to Clarence for attending the Law Enforcement Memorial Day at the Jefferson City. We had two officers that were recognized there that day, including Pappy Raines, who I remember very well. And wanted to thank him for going because I had already had activities and I couldn't get away. I would love to have been there.
It was an honor.
It looked like a fascinating thing. So I appreciate you doing that. Any other questions for Clarence? Okay, moving on. Sean, the Waynesville and St. Robert Joint Airport Board.
The Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board meeting convened on April 23rd at 3:00 PM. The Chair, Mayor Lawrence, called it to order. The minutes was accepted from the previous meeting and approved. Comments from guests was from a Ms. Pruitt, who addressed the board. Her concern were employments. She talked about how the employments in the flights, the highest number of participants were on Fridays. Outbound flights were relatively good. Inbound flights are showing a low number of passengers with no more than 10 passengers flying in. Ms. Pruitt also stated that the outbound flight seen as many as 19 passengers while others will see only three. Once again, she requested that passengers arrive at least an hour and a half prior to your flight time to ensure that the flights will be, will fly out as scheduled and there will not be any delays. Reports by the staff, administration, Mr. Harold reviewed the March budget. Mr. Harold presented the board with the fuel sales report, noting that there decreased in the fuel sales from Contour and it was stated that it was believed that Contour may be fueling in St. Louis instead, but the military fuel sales are staying steady and we are still seeing the progress in trying to procure fuel contract. The airport operations management, Mitch McDonald, spoke about the maintenance, they was getting all of the equipment ready and fixed and prepping, cleaning them out and organizing. Also, the staff have completed repairs on the airport vehicles that will be used for courtesy cars for the airport. Other business, Burns and McDowell. The military airport grant update. Dave Hadell stated that the application is almost complete. Mr. Kane stated they were in process of enhancing the map package to include the cost of the road relocation that may be used as taking a point to improve the competitiveness with the next EAS package. This will allow for a larger aircraft in the future. Also, the terminal master plan update. Mr. Kane stated that the new plan has completed for the apron. So basically, there's going to be a way to enter into the planes, bring the planes closer to the terminal. So instead of loading on the flight line, they would load from the terminal itself. So that's in the plans in the future. The request for ES waiver, Mr. Harold stated that we have to submit a waiver with the help of one of the consultants and request, a request was sent up to Senator Blunt to also submit a letter to support regarding the EAS cap violation. The state airport system plan update, Mr. Harold stated that MoDOT included the airport in their last update. Mr. Harold said more information would be available regarding the update at the next meeting. Some of the old business was the grant project updates. Mr. Harold, in reference to Amendment Four, stated Amendment Four was to be extended the time period for taxiway to January 2020 and commercial terminal expansion. As far as marketing updates, there has been a increased interest, is steady on the social media side. The air service promotion grant, Mr. Harold stated that we are moving forward with the marketing items suggested on the proposed budget in January. Mr. Harold stated also that the screen vision commercial will start airing in Wayneville Theater on March 1st. Other business, just brief these. Dave Robinson stated that the fort has offered their deicing equipment while Contour's has been down, which is, we don't need to worry about that right now.
Oh, it says Missouri.
Okay. So also, Ms. Pruitt stated that she feels that getting a code share is extremely important. She also stated that she will speak with Contour about her flight times and recommendations. She stated that the Contour has instructed them to charge and check bags unless the person is active duty military. There's discussion about this and Mr. Harold stated we will follow up with Contour. Dorsey Newcomb stated that we would like to set up a meeting with the airson commander about the flight times coordination and discuss why Contour Airlines is not showing up in their defense travel system. And this is all to increase the number of participants with the flight service. John Moore wanted to know how early a traveler should arrive and I told you earlier, it's just one hour and a half at least when you use the flights on the installation. Bruce Harrow made a motion to adjourn the meeting. He seconded the motion. Motion was passed. It was adjourned at 3:30. The next meeting is on May 28th at 3:00 PM at the St. Robert City Hall.
Okay. Just for future reference, her name is Pruitt.
Pruitt.
Corolla Pruitt. She's a jewel. Any questions for Sean about the airport? Anything, Bruce, that you want to add? Okay. So Economic Development, Councilman Farnham got elected.
Yeah, I'm a lucky guy. Guess I should have kept my comment myself last time. The meeting elected us. Economic Development met on May 7th and primarily the meeting revolved around social media policy. Lot of discussion about it, which we have in ordinance, I do believe, also in the map map. Mr. Harold also brought up the fact that the St. Robert Airport has helped sponsor the National Kids Day, that stuff about earlier. Pretty much the social media policy is something that is needed.
Very good.
And with that, we adjourned very early, very quickly. And we will be...
Okay, and I think you have the award for the day for the best report. Sorry, guys, that was the best report right there. And can I, for the people at home, can I give you some dates, please? And that was in his report here and I'm going to give you a couple. In fact, I've got some announcements here and get your pencil ready and your paper. And I will tell you that the Freedom Fest on the Square has been rescheduled to June 22nd. They had set it up for the 15th because of Flag Day, but they decided to do it with the same weekend as Cave State Cruisers, so the car show, so that they kind of play off each other. So it's June 22nd. The other thing I wanted to let, I may have given you information about this last month, but I don't think so. I think I just found it out. Our Trail of Tears Cherokee Bike Riders that come through every year are expected on June 13th around 4:00 in Loughlin Park. It's going to be a big event. There will be all kinds of proclamations and, you know, some VIPs there. And it is the 35th anniversary of these kids doing this every year. And so that'll be kind of a big deal for them. And it's also the anniversary of the National Historic Trail, which of course, we are part of. And then, the other big news is, of course, the 100 mile Route 66 garage sale. And people are excited about this. And it's going to be August 2nd and 3rd. We do have, I believe the Chamber's kind of running this event and they do have a volunteer person here for the Waynesville-St. Robert area who will be coordinating that. So that's going to be a big event. I believe they're all over Facebook already. They have a page there. So if you're interested in that, you might want to check that out. All right? We have a social media policy and I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Cecil, second by Ed. And Mr. Harold, let you discuss that just a little bit.
I need to read the titles first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Counselor.
Thank you. An ordinance establishing a social media policy for the City of Wayneville fixing and effective date. An ordinance establishing a social media policy for the City of Wayneville fixing and effective date.
And I apologize. That's my first mistake tonight, Counselor.
It's okay.
So who gave me my motion? Cecil. And my second was Ed. And Mr. Harold, would you just kind of discuss what the mayor has been doing wrong?
I'm not aware of that, Mayor, but I will discuss the social media policy. First of all, Michelle Brown did a lot of work on this.
Yes, she did.
She would be the expert about this policy. I think Amber probably followed up later for her. But it's basically, we haven't had a written policy to talk about the social media. And as you can see from events of this week, sometimes social media is quite active and basically says, you know, what we can and cannot do on our social media site and the monitoring procedures and what people can and can't say. And if they say the wrong things, or they're too derogatory, or they do certain actions, we can admit the remarks are bad from the site. And we do have an appeal process, too, if that should happen. It's basically common sense. They can't make profane, obscene remarks. They can't be very, you know, derogatory or personal attacks against people. So we'd like to answer any questions, any detail.
What we found out a few months ago was that there's a lot of litigation in this area all over this country.
Right.
And so what we can't do is block citizen comments who are critical of city officials or policy.
Surely.
Just for that basis.
Yes. And we have never done that.
No, but...
I have, you know, back when I was taking care of it, I never blocked people or removed comments simply because they disagreed with me.
Right.
But I sure did disagree, I sure did take them off if they said the magic words.
Of course.
Okay. So I will tell you that due to recent events, the mayor is really not in charge of the Facebook page anymore. And Amber is doing a great job of policing it. And of course, Michelle did, too. Michelle is out right now, of course, with medical problems. But I want everybody to know that the City of Waynesville tries very hard to be fair and to do what's legal and to do what's right.
Sure.
And in fact, one time we were told, you know, the mayor's doing this wrong. And that person was right. And I apologized for it. And we corrected that and it is not done anymore. Amber will attest to that because I bother her all the time by saying, Amber, you need to look at this. Because she will be the one to put it on the Facebook page. And one more thing, a positive thing. We have a very active Facebook page. I don't know if you guys have looked, but we have like 6,000 people on our page. I can post something about the city and in an hour, I have 1,500 people looking at it. So it is a very active page. I will tell you also, it's a very positive page. And that's what we try to do. I want our Facebook page to be for information and marketing of our city. And again, I want to compliment the two girls that have been working on this with me. And I just think we've turned it around. It's going to be a very, very positive thing for the city. So do any of you have any questions for Bruce before we vote? Again, this has been in our committee system for some time and several of us are very familiar with it. And so, Madam Clerk, would you take the roll?
Councilman France.
Yes.
Councilman Conlon.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farnham.
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. We now have an official social media policy in the City of Waynesville. Carrying on here, we're almost through. It's been a long meeting tonight. Bruce, City Administrator's report.
The mayor, the good news is most of the things have already been talked about.
Exactly.
I will be at a few highlights, but the budget, budget's still pretty good shape with, you know, I think our net income is about $131,000, a little over, for the year. And sales tax revenue still showing positive growth, up 2% or 3% over what we projected with our budget. Of course, a lot of the other things we've already reported. I do want to point out that we took care of a troublesome abatement recently with our own city forces.
Yoo-hoo!
So that was, that was good.
I took pictures.
You took pictures, okay. And we've been working, of course, Jack, been working to get some water repairs done in the downtown area. And as mentioned before, he's got his Class A water license. So congratulations to Jack.
Very proud of you guys. Mention the use tax real quick for the public.
Okay, sure. The use tax, we're still looking good on the use tax. I think we budgeted, of course, our budget is conservative. We budgeted $40,000 for income, but as at the end of March, it was up $65,000.
Wow.
So that's, that's pretty good. So hopefully, that will keep growing.
And I think I said this last month, you know, kudos to the people in Waynesville who were one of the few cities in this whole region who passed this internet use tax. Actually, it wasn't a tax, it simply let us collect it.
Yeah.
And here we are with $65,000 we didn't have.
Right.
And remember that we have earmarked that money for roads and stormwater drainage issues. And so we'll see how, we'll see this first year how much money that is. Mike and I were just discussing that. You know, we may end up with $200,000.
Wow.
And maybe there's some other project that we would want to do. But our first focus is going to be roads. So any questions for Bruce? All right? We're going to do council comments. We'll start down there with you, Mike.
Okay. Recently, in reading some of the things that's going on, recent, on one issue, there was a lot of comments about transparency and with sneaking. What our citizens need to know, and it's been said over and over... What our citizens need to know, and it's been said over and over, is that every, every committee, one of the very first things on every committee's agenda, to include city council, is citizen's comments, to where every citizen, any citizen within our community has the absolute right to come and speak to every committee and to this body here as a collective group. Everything that we discuss, such as marijuana, I've been to three different committees' meetings on that, to where it's been addressed for months in three different committees. Any citizen who wants to know when these things meet can go to our city page, they'll find out where the meetings are held at, what time that meeting is held, and they are absolutely welcome to come in and talk, or just be present. There are no votes allowed to come out of a committee in the closed session. They all have to be in an open session. So, we don't do any voting behind those doors that you cannot be part of. We bring them out, then we make our vote to bring it to the full body. The other thing is, school's getting ready to get out, in fact, Lakeway ends school this tomorrow, and so we're going to have kids from the surrounding communities, they'll be in town, out and about, motorcycles are moving. If you're out, please consider wearing some white colored clothing or some type of reflective clothing, especially when you're moving around down within the community along 66, because during the summer, there's always someone walking in the road just into the gutter, and many, many times, they're in full dark colored clothing, and that's really dangerous, so please, think safety in everything you do, as we do as a city and our city employees. I'd also like to thank the Parks Department. I visited them while they was washing down our pavilions and that stuff, and they were doing a bang-up job, really working their tails off. So, kudos to those guys.
Very good.
I've had a kind of a bad week, folks.
Uh-oh.
I've lost two...
One is...
Over in Dixon, and most people know about John Ward, he passed away. But the other one was a special friend that has received almost no publicity. Okay, and I'm not talking about the movie star or the... I'm talking about a man named Bob Maxwell. He was the oldest Medal of Honor winner in the country.
Wow.
In World War II, during the Battle of Bull, Bob took himself on a grenade to save the people in command, and he survived. Obviously, he died last Saturday night, and... ... in or Fox or any other news stations. Of course, you know, there's a lot of Bob Maxwell's out there. People who have served in the military or are serving now, that are willing to give their lives so that you can walk down the streets of this country, say what you want to say, even on social media, and basically, you're a dream, and you would not be or not be one in your area.
Wow.
So, Armed Forces Day is on Saturday. I think now it's Armed Forces Appreciation Day. So, if you see one of these vets, or even a kid, and their kid's big anyway, they just put on a uniform a month ago, thank them for what they have done and what they're willing to do in the future.
Nice, Ed, very much so. Clarence?
I'd like to thank Mr. Harold, his staff, and Waynesville city employees for all that they've done. They make us look good. Also, I would like to thank the different committees, volunteers for the committee don't get paid, and they do a lot of work. They help us out immensely, and I'd like to thank them also, to include Mrs. Cradon.
Mrs. Cradon, Mr. Beamer?
Yes, Mr. Beamer.
We miss.
Ed, I couldn't have said anything better than you. I appreciate your thoughts about the military. Ed, thank you for your expression, especially our Medal of Honor winner.
Very good. Nice.
Sir, I don't remember your name.
David Carpenter.
David, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing complaints, thanks for bringing your questions. That's what makes the government work. You didn't attack us personally.
Your bench.
Yeah.
And your bench!
And don't live here without your bench, but thank you for stating problems and concerns that you had without attacking us personally. We've been attacked personally over the social media quite a bit, but thank you. That's what, that's what that podium's there for, is for citizens to bring their complaints, and we thank you.
Can I say, one of the comments was, "We're a bunch of liberal potheads." I couldn't help but laugh, because I've got six retired military up here and two preachers. I don't believe it could be any more conservative. Sean?
Well, I just want to say one thing. I volunteer within the community, and I just want to share this with everyone. There's a great program that the Chamber of Commerce, they have been, we have been kind of pushing out with the Military Government Affairs Committee, and it's called Civility Speak Your Peace, and it's a program that talks about how we are to live together within this community, respect one another, respect every other person's comments and their belief without degrading them, without destroying their character, without trying to, just defamation of character, those types of things. So, I encourage all of the citizens...
Amen.
... to just take a peek. Every week, they give a little note, and just be considerate of everyone. It doesn't cost us anything to be considerate, but it'll cost us everything to do otherwise. So, I just say, with that, let's just respect one another, live together in this community. Everybody wants to have a good life. Everybody wants to live, laugh, and love. That's all I have.
I like it. See?
That's hard to follow, but I actually wrote down some stuff. Again, you know, I'm retired military. There were some comments on social media specifically regarding the mayor, and, you know, the mayor alluded to it earlier, we do this on a committee system, so, and then Councilman France also said, everybody is welcome to those committees. The reason I am sitting here today is because I walked into the Waynesville, and I was going to build a addition onto my house, and a guy looked up at me like I was, you know, handicapped or something, and I didn't know what I was talking about. That day, I said I was going to get involved in that committee, so I went to Mayor Hardman back then, and I put in my thing for the Planning and Zoning Committee. I was on the Planning and Zoning Committee for a long time. I decided to start teaching school, and I got out of it, and then I got sucked back in, again. Mayor Hardman sucked me back in, because she appointed me to the city council before I got elected to it. The city's been extremely proactive on a lot of things, from paying bills to medicinal marijuana, to making ordinances, things like that. You know, I was in Colorado Springs in the military, my wife's from Colorado Springs, they make ordinances where you can't smoke marijuana in public, but if you go to a town next door, those ordinance aren't there. So, people live in the communities that they want to be in. So, us being proactive, seems to me that everybody that was reactive online and calling us everything under the sun, was, to me, them being reactive for them not knowing what was going on.
Right.
So, if you want to know what's going on, come to the meetings. Get involved. Be a community, be a community organizer, be anything that you want to, but just be informed before you start making comments.
Wow.
Very good.
Amen.
And I don't talk a whole lot of seriousness, because most of the time, I'm a joker anyway. I run around, you know, high school kids in high school, and nothing serious in high school. So, but, you know, please, be informed. So, you know, to have an education doesn't exactly mean that you have intelligence.
Wow. Very good. Bill?
I'll pass, I can't talk any of that.
You can't talk any of that. Well, I've got two things to say, and I'll make them as fast as I can. Number one is, I said I was going to do this tonight. For some reason, I've given my friends the attitude that maybe I don't, that maybe I'm a little snowflake or something, because I have been overwhelmed today with phone calls from Nevada, Arkansas, Wisconsin, all my friends calling me, asking me how I am, because they see me being attacked. Well, I want you all to know that I'm a tough old bird, and you don't have to worry about me, okay? I tell you this, I put myself through college, I raised two kids, I taught 6,000 students, and I buried my husband. I can get through this.
Amen.
Okay? And then lastly, I have a big announcement to make. On October 24th, that's a few months down the road, boys write it down, y'all notice I said boys? It's the teacher, anyway, now. Boys, write this date down. October 24th, MRPC is going to have their annual dinner in Waynesville, Missouri.
All right.
It is the first time it's ever happened. The last time they were here was at St. Robert, that's been many years ago, and we not, we are hosting the Merrimack Regional Planning Commission. It is the 50th anniversary of that group. They are, of course, a great group. We work with them a lot on our roads and transportation things and all of that. And then, every year that I've been mayor, I have nominated somebody for a volunteer award through Merrimack Regional. Two times, I nominated men in our community, and they were chosen for the big award, which is called the Eugene Northern Award. Last year, Mike Dunbar was chosen for that. Several years ago, Paul Corbett was chosen for that. But every year, I've recognized our volunteers. Sean, I believe you were one of my nominees one year, and I'd like to announce to the public that this year, I am nominating Jan and Terry Premus from the Old Stagecoach Stop. They don't get very much recognition.
Yes.
Well, this year, they're going to get it, and I will tell you that they, everything they do for this community, you couldn't even list it. I wasn't going to get choked up. But I, most of them want to say this about Jan and Terry, they love Waynesville. They've always loved Waynesville. And so, this year, I'm going to honor them, and please, everybody, put that date on your calendar, let's be sure and be there at Forsen, and let the MRPC know that we have a strong council. Well, hasn't this evening been interesting? First of all, I apologize for it being so late for you kids, but I bet you were interested tonight, kids. I bet you kind of found it a little more interesting than usual. So, is there anything else for the good of the community? This meeting is adjourned.
As a high school teacher, they would have only been on...